Before we go on record, Parry called me to know what's going on.
Okay, you're on record.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10 colon 4 dash 6 at section of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Dosskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Musarella.
Here.
Mr. Curry.
Yeah.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
There.
Chairman Ira King.
Present.
The other board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. Humming.
At this point in this evening's meeting, let's start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any member of the public, is any business brought to this board that is not on the seat of the agenda? I hear none, see none. I'd just like to take a quick poll. Scott, you cannot, next week, you're out.
Correct. Yes.
You're gonna be here next week?
Yeah.
Willins?
No, I will be.
You won't be.
I will not be. I'm gonna be in the.
You'll be here next week?
Yeah.
Do you know Dave's status?
I do not. He'll be here for the next meeting, maybe a few minutes later.
Okay, because I'm gonna be late. I probably won't get there until about 8:30. So as long as Dave can run the meeting, I think you still have.
Still five?
No, you won't have seven.
Well, the next meeting.
You'll only have six.
They're going to be questioning McDonough. I don't know how quickly, you know, the audience, I don't know how quickly we'll get through that.
It's gonna be questioning of the engineer?
The planner.
Of the planner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the ejection attorney will probably be there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm gonna be at a seat, and I probably won't get out of there until about eight o'clock.
Seven thirty start or?
Seven thirty start. Let's start off with the first item on the agenda. Application 23 dash 44, Frank D.
Did you ask about anybody on any business?
Yes.
No way you did it. You started to, then we did the.
No, I did it after. I came back and did it.
Oh, you must have been asleep, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay, so, well, if you got dressed up, you might even know what was going on.
I don't know if I could sit between you two tonight.
You know how old we've been, friends? Almost fifty years.
And today's the last day?
Probably the last day. Fifty years worth. Next year.
Yeah, I know.
We should have a party.
Where are old JC stuff?
Twenty-three forty-four, you said, Chairman?
Oh, gosh. All right. Frank D slash Ian Ackland, 11 Scenic Drive, C-Varians, to construct a two-story addition and second-story deck. Are they present? They are present. Come on up.
Gentlemen, if you could remain standing and raise your right hands. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could just please state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Ian Ackland.
And if you spell the last name?
A-C-K-L-A-N-G.
And Mr. Ackland, you are the applicant?
J.C. contacted. I'm going to work with him.
Okay. And your name, sir?
Richard.
Richard?
Kenny, Kenny Yan, easy life.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so. You're looking for variances. Front yard, 1.5 is existing, 40 allowed, 23 proposed. Side yard, two feet exists, 10 feet allowed, 14 feet proposed. Rear yard, 20 feet existing, 20 allowed, 10.3 proposed. Accessory side yard, two feet existing, six foot allowed, proposed, 14.5. Accessory rear yard, 9.85, 10 is allowed, 12 is proposed. Yards and courts, 19.35, 19 is allowed, 23.54 is proposed. And building coverage, you're proposing a 21 percent, where 15 is allowed. You gonna tell us what we're gonna do here and why we wanna do it?
Okay. So this gentleman is looking for extra space in his house. He has a deck on the second floor that comes off his house. He wants to enclose it and make extra space. He's not a cantilevering out four feet over that deck, but he just wants to enclose that deck to add more footage to his house for, to have more people there. Because he has no room in his living room and dining room. His living room, dining room is all one. But he just wanna close that deck in that you see on the drawing.
You are in a R3 zone, which requires 15,000 square feet lots. You have 7,450 square feet, so you have an undersized lot. If you had a 15,000 square foot lot, you wouldn't be here.
They have all the setback problems.
Little setback problems, right.
Because they exist.
Yes, because they're right on the water.
I mean, the variance says a two-story addition. Is there a two-story addition?
Well, it's not a two-story addition. What it is, the deck comes out of the second story and then it's a bottom story.
That's what you're filling in?
Just the deck on the second story.
Underneath?
And underneath, yes.
So there is no two-story addition?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay. So we clear that up. And a second-story deck with patio below, which is all connected to what you just said.
It's off next to the wall, yes.
Sir, your closing wants existing?
Yes, sir. Except for, there's a cantilever coming out for another four feet on the second floor. That's all. But I put a deck on the outside of that addition.
Okay. I got it.
So is that what's really taking up the extra?
Coverage?
Yes, that four feet, but the 16 feet long.
And you've had no issues with water runoff from neighbors or anything?
Nothing at all.
He's in the lake.
You're right on the lake.
Right on the water.
The lake is the time in running out extra water.
So the garage and the front of the house next to the street and side yards all exist, nothing's changed. Everything's in the back.
Everything is staying the same except for.
And the only new coverage is the deck off, the existing deck.
Yes, sir. That's it.
Closing the existing deck.
Is that, is that deck got a ton of groove or is it?
It has ton and groove, yes.
It will have ton and groove?
Yes.
So you're gonna put leaders on it or something?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that deck is just the second level? It's not ground and second, or is it?
It's, patio's underground. Underneath that deck, it's like got rain escape, and then on the second, it's just a deck.
But there's nothing else being built on the ground?
No, sir.
Okay.
So the, you're extending the deck, correct?
On the, on the.
On the second floor?
On the second floor, just from that four feet.
But you're not extending the patio?
No.
It is closing.
Patio is just closing.
So some of these items on the list, though, front yard, 1.5 existing.
They're right on the street.
Already allowed, 23 proposed. How can that be?
Just they're all existing.
Okay, they're all, they're there already and, okay. Any other questions by the board? Any members? Charge your eye down there?
No, I have the same.
I can't see.
I have the same question about the sun setback.
Is there a report from the town engineer?
No, not that I've received.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. Anything else, guys?
No.
Can someone make a brief statement as to why we should approve this and then do a resolution?
Sure. This is the minimus in nature. They're not really doing anything that hasn't been there. So I'll be voting for it. Application 23 colon 44, Frank D, Ian Ackland, 11 Scenic Drive, Lot 124, Lot 3 Zone R3. Recommend granting a C-Variant. Is it really still to construct a two-story addition, second-story deck, or not really?
Not really.
I'll put it in patio below contrary to section 430 dash 35, columns 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10, and section 430 dash 10I.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll. Yes.
Dosskowitz.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Ira King.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and then you'll be free to proceed.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, let's call case 2345, Mahir Shah, 7 Washington Avenue. Please come forward.
Sir, if you could remain standing and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name, please?
Mahir, M-I-H-I-R, last name Shah, S-H-A-H.
S-H-A-H?
Yes.
And you're the applicant, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, you've got some existing things here. How long have you all been in the house?
So I moved into last year, July 2022.
Okay.
It's a newly constructed house. And basically, what I have done is, of course, I live with our elderly parents and in-laws and my kids.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. So I moved into July 2022. We live with, you know, my parents, sometime my in-laws comes, like six or seven months, and my kids. So it's a newly constructed house, and I help do the patio and, you know, shed and the walkway. My parents have a mobility issue, so they don't drive, so usually they are basically at home. So they uses the backyard mostly, as long as the weather is good, like 62, 65 plus. So.
And this is a new construction, you said, right?
That is correct, yes.
And who did the work? Did you do it yourself or did you hire a contractor?
I, for this favor, patio, it's the contractor.
And the contractor, did he ever, was there ever a discussion about a permit needed?
Unfortunately, no, otherwise I would have done it.
And he just went ahead and did the work?
Was that again?
And he just went ahead and?
He just went ahead and to do the work, and I just wanted to do the right thing. That's why I came here. There were no complaints. All the neighbors signed it. Even if it's a storm, ah, sorry, stormwater runoff, I worked with the engineer and everything was done correctly. And I have the letter from, or probably you might have it too, from Brandon Kreese, that everything has been, everything has been addressed.
Yes, we have an updated letter from the engineer. Just Bob, you and Mr. Terniak have the letter or myself?
I have it.
So, so September 7 letter is being addressed by a subsequent letter?
It's already addressed.
It was already addressed by, yes.
Okay. He's got a lot of comments. You get it?
Yeah.
September 7.
All right.
So, can help me here? So September 7th, 11, did have a lot of comments, but you absolved or?
So it was already done. So basically, what I have done, meaning the contractor, sorry. So what they have done is they did all underground roof leader pipes. It was like 12 feet, not 12 feet, sorry, one feet deep and 24 inch, whatever is required. So Paul and, I'm sorry, I always forget his name, Brandon came by as well.
They agreed?
Oh, they agreed. And this is a letter. I'm sure you guys.
Everybody see it?
No, we don't see it.
You, everybody saw it down there?
Yeah.
You have a question, Scott? Oh, you look like you're about to ask me a question. Okay.
Why retaining wall?
So basically, what happened was, I have the picture too, just in case, just one second. So what happened was, it's a newly constructed house. So they, what they have done, the, the original contractor who built the house, they helped the very huge stones and covered it as around. And my kids are running around in the backyard, right? So instead of this, that, there was like huge stones.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to mark that as evidence.
Okay.
Okay, so put A1.
Are you, are you leaving that for us?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, it's not a wrong.
Bring it up here, please.
I have six or seven copies.
Of the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Six or seven, I didn't count it. So that's why I have done the wall.
So we'll mark this exhibit A.
This is in the back of your property?
Yeah, it is.
And this was just to clean it up?
Ah, yeah, because it was a huge stones, like whatever they constructed there, they were like huge stones. They just covered it. So instead of that, I put it, the retention wall, and we're gonna plant it there, basically. If, you know.
What'd you do with the stones? Just bury them?
Ah, no, I didn't bury it. I, I had to pay for it. I had to pay for it to, you know.
Be removed?
Yes, removed.
Well, how's the patio constructed? Does the water go through it or does it run off?
It's runoff. So, so what happens is, there's a picture as well.
Yeah, one's in.
Sure.
Well, the engineer seems to have signed off. I was just asking.
Yeah, so what happens?
Point of information.
So up here and on the side, under the, under this, basically, we put the, whatever the pipe.
Put it.
Yeah. It's all around. So, and neighbor have no complaint. They sign it and everything.
So this is like Wagner Flex?
Like around the patio.
Is this, is this stamped concrete?
Ah, yeah, it's stamped concrete.
Stamped concrete. There's no runoff on there.
Do you have an extra one of those?
Yeah, sure.
May I have a piece?
Sure.
So I have a question. Is a neighbor on the fence or the?
No, neighbor owns the fence.
Because the wall shown on the plan is showing just over the property line all the way around.
Yeah, I mean, it was already existed, so I'm not sure.
You may wanna get something from the drainage property owner that they allow it.
Okay.
Because they didn't wanna have it there. It's, it's, it's over the property line. It's showing.
Okay.
Serving.
Okay. Any other questions? No questions?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. You voluntarily came for a permit.
I voluntarily came. There were no complaints.
God bless you.
Thank you.
God bless. The contractor who went ahead and did the work without a permit?
Yeah.
He's wrong.
That is correct. And what happened was, just saying, my contractor who built the house, his name is Ranjan. It's a Cosmos construction. And they did, I talked to them, and they said, why didn't you tell us before?
Yeah.
Go ahead, do the right thing. Everyone will help us, help you out. Whatever is needed, you gotta do it. And that's why I'm just here.
Are there any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. Who wants to make a statement or a resolution?
This is a reasonable request, since he bought the new house and he did the proper way of doing an engineering department approved it. So I'm in favor of this. Application 23 colon 45, Mahir Shah, 7 Washington Avenue, Block 610, Lot Number 10, Zone R dash 4, to issue or grant a C-Variant to legalize the shed, patio, walkway, and retaining walls contrary to section 430 dash 10, section C, shed and side and rail. Section 430 dash 35, column 8 and 13, section 430 dash 11D, and section 430 dash 10I.
Second, Jasko.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Dosskowitz.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Ira King.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and then you'll get your permit. Okay?
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Enjoy. Okay, let's call case 2347, Stuart McCardle, 137 Beachwood Road, C-Varians to construct a shed, patio, and walkway. Good evening.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could spell your name, please, for the record?
Sir, Stuart McCardle, M-C-C-A-R-D-L-E.
M-C-C-A-R-D-L-E?
Correct.
Stuart, traditional spelling?
Yes.
Very good. You're the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Stuart, can I ask you one question, Dean?
Sure.
You put along engineer's report dated September 11. Have you resolved that with them?
We did.
Have we got a letter?
I don't know, Nora, did you get that today?
Yes, there is also a follow-up email on his application from the county engineer's office.
It appears that the circumstances are quite similar to the prior application.
I sounded very familiar, didn't I?
Okay.
Is there anything you wanna add?
Um, mine's not done yet.
That's a good thing.
Getting it beforehand. Other than that, it's very similar, yes.
And we have, we have a letter of sign-off, more or less, the engineer?
Yeah.
Know what he said?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so you're in a R3 zone. Really? That's R3, isn't it?
Yep.
And your lot size is, how much?
Well, let me check that.
10,000 square feet. So you're not terrible. At least about 40,000.
Well, that's not terrible.
Better than some, worse than others.
Okay, so you're asking for an insignificant increase in yards and courts, open deck, an insignificant increase in building coverage, and a little bit of impervious coverage. Why don't you tell us about your proposal?
Yeah, so seeking to add a patio in the back. Need a little bit more space for entertaining friends and family. Put a grill back there, table and chairs and patio, and a pop-up.
You got a little sidewalk on the side.
And then a sidewalk to get back there.
Which patio is, 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 water go through it or not?
Ah, what are we, paper patio, something like Cambridge.
Are you gonna, are you gonna fill in the cracks with cement or?
Sand. I don't think so. Sand, whatever that special sand is.
Yeah.
What?
Water goes through.
Still go through? Oh, that's interesting.
It's the epoxy stuff.
Ah, okay. So I'm about to do my sand. Okay, so it's kind of a de minimis request. You're, you're gonna comply with the engineer's?
Correct.
Requirements, so we don't really have a drainage issue. Any other questions by the board? No.
Just for the record, there's no other place you can put the shed, right?
Shed could, well. I could take down the swing set, maybe, on the other side of it.
It conforms.
But not really.
It conforms, Bernie. The shed conforms.
I thought it was, it's got six feet.
I was, I was looking to learn. Okay. Any members of the public have any questions of this, this witness on testimony given? Hear none, see none. You don't wanna add anything, do you?
I hear yours, Ted.
Any members who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none, see none. And a recommendation for this de minimis request?
Approve it.
Okay. And someone frame a resolution?
Application 23 colon 47, Stuart McCardle, 137 Beachwood Road, Block 248, Lot 8, Zone R3, recommend granting a C-Variant to construct a shed, patio and walkway contrary to section 430 dash 10I and section 430 dash 35, columns 10 and 13.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Dosskowitz.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Ira King.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and you'll be free to proceed at that point.
Great. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Good night.
This one's in.
It says R3 zones, 20 feet, remember?
20 feet for a shed?
No.
I don't think there's any zone that says 20 feet for a shed.
No, 10 feet, 10 feet. Yeah, it says 10 feet.
From side or the rear?
There's no shed here. There's a deck.
I know, I've been.
Shed conforms on 6 and 6.
Is this something you're gonna have to worry about later? We don't give a variance now?
Two, three.
Well, what's the, who made the mistake?
Jennifer.
No, the shed is 6 and 6 from the property line.
Yeah, but the, the chart says 10 feet. Unless I'm looking at the wrong, I don't believe that. You okay? You just did?
Yeah.
Which one?
R3 rear yard for accessory buildings, 10 feet.
No, sheds are 6 and 6.
The shed is not an accessory building?
It is an accessory building, however, it is 6 feet from the side and rear property lines.
Okay.
And that is the only item that, you know, kinda is different than.
So shed is.
It's not on her report because.
Shed is an exception to the accessory building?
Yeah, it's an accessory, however, the setbacks for a shed are 6 and 6 from side and rear.
You got that?
Yeah, I just wanna know where it says that.
Nora.
I will send. Well, it doesn't say that he needs a variance for a shed on here. It just says.
There is another question.
Fine. Nobody else cares. Nobody else cares, I'm not gonna.
Proposal, you're going to see it. But he doesn't need anything for a shed, no variance for a shed.
Okay. Let's call case 2348, Todd Dennison, 31 Bohem Avenue, C-Varians to construct an open deck with stairs. Good evening.
Before we get started, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name, please, for the record and spell it?
That is T-O-B-D, U-D double N.
That was my mistake.
And you're the applicant?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a Mount Tabor R3 zone, 15,000 square feet, and we've only got 5,010 feet to work.
You're a big one.
Which is a big lot from Mount Tabor, I guess, sure. It's not a small lot.
I love that.
McDonough would like go at 600 square feet.
We have 11.
1100.
The house is small.
Oh, man. All right, so I think we understand Tabor. You wanna move front, you wanna move the front yard? What are you, on the corner?
Yeah.
Okay. So you got two front yards?
Yeah.
And you want to?
No engineer's report.
Front yard.
Just trying to increase the size of my deck a little bit. Right now, about two people can sit out there and eat dinner. We're a family of three, and we sometimes have a mother come over, so.
Okay.
It's a tiny, you know, I just wanna move out another couple of feet in both directions.
How big is the deck gonna be?
Uh, two feet bigger than it is and I'm going out and four feet.
No dimensions here, it just shows the square.
Uh, hold on, I can tell you. It should, uh, right now, right now, it's 10 by 12. I think it's going 12 to either 14 or 16.
Okay.
Oh, here it is. Extend current deck two feet and four feet more to make it align with the side of the house. Okay, so we're.
Do you fit it?
Uh.
So it'll be twelve by?
Fourteen by sixteen.
Fourteen by sixteen, it's currently ten by twelve.
The wood deck?
Yes.
Water runs through it and it's black side?
Right, exactly, yeah.
You know, this is a typical Mount Tabor application.
What's the deal with the treehouse? What's that, they're still there?
It's still there, yeah, it was there when I bought it, I bought it right in the middle when COVID hit, that's how I got.
Oh, is it, are you, got kids with?
Yeah, believe it or not, I know I, I'm an old guy, but I got a young kid. And he loves the treehouse, he's nine years old.
Oh, that's great.
His band, uh, his band meets there, the Rockin' Reptiles.
That's fantastic.
The Rockin' Reptiles, yeah, yeah.
So thank God you have the treehouse, right? Uh, is it stable, good?
Oh, it's really stable, yeah, yeah, whoever built it did a great job, yeah, I mean, it has a real roof on it and.
Must, must've gotta permit, 'cause you're no.
No, it says, how you legalize treehouse?
Oh, we're legal, I didn't see that. Oh, okay, yeah.
I figure he's going to outgrow it and then I'm gonna rip it out, and I can't wait to do that.
Well, then you may wanna go up there, you know, have a beer.
I've not been up there on Halloween, I'll go up and hang out in there.
Okay. All right, any other?
That is gonna be open to water, it's not gonna change?
No, no, not at all.
Any, any other questions?
I just have a, I need a clarification on existing, uh, conditions, it shows a deck, raised wood deck, is it staying?
The raised wood deck? No, I'm ripping the raised wood out.
Okay, then you're going to put a, build a deck.
I'm gonna build a new one on top of, right, or replace it, exactly.
Okay, so that is going away, what you have right now?
Well, it's rotting away.
Okay.
It's going faster than I want it to.
You're turning out an old deck, putting on a new deck, making it a little bit bigger.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. Nothing else you'd wanna add, right?
Not this far.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none. De minimis request for an area with a subland ski?
Absolutely.
Someone frame a resolution?
Application twenty-three colon forty-eight, Todd Dennison, thirty-one Bohem Avenue, block forty-nine, lot one, zone R dash three to issue a grant of C variance to construct an open deck with stairs contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column four, Cock Place, Bohem Avenue, Sharp Place, that is intersection, I believe, section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen, and section four thirty dash ten I.
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion, Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Duskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willans.
Yep.
Yes. Results of the variances granted, we'll memorialize this at your next, at our next meeting and you'll be able to enjoy your deck, so.
Thank you so much.
Oh, our pleasure, that's what we're here for. We just love to give out residential variances. And we did four applications in thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn the seven o'clock meeting.
Some of them.
Wait a second.
Yes.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let's catch our breath for two minutes, uh...
Does that drag down the shirt?
No, no. Well, you can come down for the day, you can go down for the day, we'll, you know, sit out, sit out in the back.
They'll even let you buy him lunch.
Yeah. Okay, announcement is made, that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with, I'd say, ten colon four dash six, that's second of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here again.
Mr. Duskowitz.
Here.
Mazzarella.
Still here.
Mr. Marie.
Yeah.
Mr. Ready.
Not present.
Mr. Willans.
Yep.
Chairman Aricane.
Still here.
Our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Still present.
Board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. Hurney.
You know, when we were talking before about next week's meeting and whether we'd have enough, I know, I just realized that Nancy's not here, right?
And Dave.
Hi.
Do we know her status for next?
I am unsure of her status right now.
So it could very well be we're gonna struggle to get five to start that meeting. Maybe, because Scott's out.
I'm out of time.
Davy's out, I'm gonna be late, that brings this down to six.
Nancy and Dave, we don't know.
So it's only four as of now, that we're sure. Definitely are sure, yeah.
Okay, I'm not giving up my signal thing, I tell you already now, so I'll be late. You may have to start the meeting at eight thirty. Okay. Application twenty-three forty-three. Jimena Gutierrez, are you present?
Yes.
Come on up. You all can come up if you like. Sure. Are you, who's gonna testify?
Will both of you be testifying or just one of you? If you could please both stand and raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony, oh, young lady, very nice. You swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could please just state your name for the record and spell it? Sir?
Santiago. S-A-N-T-I-A-G-O. Last name is Munoz. M-U-N-O-Z.
And you both will be the applicants, correct?
We didn't get, we didn't get her name, though.
Oh, Catalina.
Catalina. Hello, Catalina, you are absolutely adorable. I hope your father has a shotgun for about ten, twelve years from now, 'cause when it, you know, when, when boyfriend comes over to date, your father will be sitting in the rocking chair with the shotgun across his lap. Okay, you can sit, just gotta, speaking to the microphone.
That's as nice as we get.
Here we go. So. You live on Mini Haha in Lake Hiwatha, you want a C variance to construct a one-story addition, second-story addition, driveway, landing, and stairs, walkway, and balcony. Now, you are in an R four zone, which is six thousand square feet, and you have?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, you got a big lot.
Yeah, we got, we got the biggest lot, like the whole.
Is it long, is it long or wide?
It's, like, we live like in a corner lot, so it's like an L shape, so we got like a couple.
It's square, are you serious? I'd be biased.
That's a nice sized lot, Lake Hiwatha.
That is, but.
It's a corner.
Ma'am, if you could just speak into the microphone. Nora, is that on?
It should be on.
Yeah, very good.
There you go.
We're fine.
It's, it's more recording you than making you louder.
I think that's what it is, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Oh, no, I was just saying, it's a great corner lot.
What's the purpose of the addition?
Can we read that one, please?
What's the purpose of the addition?
So the purpose of the addition is that our family, you know, we want a bigger family, and we also have my father-in-law living with us, so we currently need more room, 'cause right now we just have two bedrooms and we got, as well as a living room, which that's not.
Okay, and you've got three adults and one child at this point?
Yeah.
In two bedrooms?
Right.
It looks like building coverage is five percent, that's, what is that? Ten percent, yeah, that's five hundred square feet. Impervious coverage is, is point one six, it's not even worth considering, the yards and courts, courts, open deck, not significant, and the front yard, corner lot, um, I thought twenty-five feet is allowed. Oh, okay, yes, yeah, but that's in reverse. So you're, you're, you're only asking for a three, three point seven five foot, uh, now, in terms of the houses that are, are on your block, will this construction fit in with the facade, you know, in terms of the way the houses are built, you know, setbacks and everything, or is it gonna be?
It really isn't changing setbacks, not changing setbacks at all, it's just going up.
Like, my two neighbors, they both have like two, you know, like two stories, the one on the left and the one there, left and right. My, my, like, my house, the only one, like, one level floor, and the one's neighbor, they got two level floors.
So now your house is gonna be two stories, one on each side of two stories, right? You're just going up?
Yeah, I'm just going up, yeah.
So you'll have a two-story house?
Yes.
You, assuming you're gonna have more, two bedrooms than that?
Oh, yeah, hundred percent, yes.
And the addition is also two stories?
Uh, yes, well, we only got one level, so they're gonna add up a second level and they're gonna have three bedrooms upstairs.
You have a one-story house now?
Yes.
You're gonna put an addition onto that, correct?
Correct.
And then, then the second floor is gonna be the full bottom floor?
Yes.
This is the addition. And where's the addition? On the ground floor?
Uh, where my garage is, they're gonna, that's gonna be part of like the living room and dining room area.
So it's gonna have your garage. You're not gonna have a garage?
No, the garage's gonna be in the other side of the house, in, in the front lot, in Mini Haha.
That'll be new construction?
Yes.
So that's where you get the additional impervious coverage requirements, is that correct?
I believe so.
The big, the big, so is the garage gonna be two stories or what's?
No, the garage is gonna be one, one, one story.
Okay, so you're gonna make a one-story house, a two-story house, and add a garage.
Correct.
And you're adding a driveway too, right? Is that, okay.
The real coverage is the garage.
And the driveway.
Plus the driveway.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, yeah.
I don't see it.
Uh, was an engineer taking part?
No.
Nora, there's nothing.
How does your lot slope? Does it slope towards the street or does it slope to the back, you know, which way the water goes?
More to the right of the house. And I, there, we, we have a drain, a huge drain, that the, all the water goes into the, the drain for the sewers, I guess, sewer drain, just right in front of our house, so the water goes to, to the sewer.
To that, runs off your lot to that.
I'm sorry?
It runs off your lot to that drain?
Yes.
The street.
Yeah, okay, we got lucky, we got a nice drain right there.
Is that towards Mini Haha, is that the way?
Yeah, that's Mini Haha, yes, on the right side of Mini Haha, yes.
The only thing is that, you know, when you start building and you get construction permits and everything, your contractor has to be aware of potential changes in the way the drainage is, and you're gonna have to make sure that you're not draining water if you regrade or anything like that, that you can't affect any neighbors.
Gotcha, you know, we, we're lucky that we have a big old, big drain running right in front of our house, so I'm making sure all the pipes down, pipes will go to that drain, so.
Do they do that now, 'cause you have leaded?
Yeah, I got, I got, yeah, all the water goes through the drain, 'cause the house, when we first bought the house, everything got flooded, so I'm making sure that the drain pipes face.
Go out to the street?
Yes, 'cause, and I forget it, all be flooded, our whole yard will be flooded.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, yeah.
Okay, any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none. Sounds like a good application, Mr. Jaskowitz, you like it?
It does, it does, they're taking care of an elderly parent, maybe wanna grow a family, sounds good to me.
Somebody frame a resolution?
Application twenty-three colon forty-three, Jimena Gutierrez, uh, ten Mini Haha Boulevard, block five thirty-eight, lot one, zone R four, recommend granting a C variance to construct a one-story addition, second-story addition, driveway, landing, and stairs, walkways, and balconies contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns four, ten, and thirteen, and section four thirty dash ten I.
Second ready.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Duskowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Yes.
Mr. Marie.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Mr. Willans.
Yes.
Yes, the result is the variance is granted, we'll memorialize this at our next meeting and you'll be free to proceed.
Good luck. Okay, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
She's gonna have her own bedroom. What happened to Katerine? Night, Katerine, what a cute name. You know, the reason your parents got the variance is 'cause you were so cute.
Patel.
You can tell, I'm, I'm a slum, so, so, right, John?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay, application twenty-three forty-nine, Rupish Patel, seven, thirty-seven English Town Road, C variance to legalize an air conditioning unit, oh, you gotta be kidding me.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand, you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And your name, sir?
Professor R U P E S H P A T E L.
And you're the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, um...
So you're replacing air conditioner where the other one was, on the same slab?
Yeah.
Why are you here?
Sorry?
Why are you here?
I mean, I, so, again, I just, this is my first house, I'm not even aware about these things.
Not working, yeah.
Sorry?
So, so you had an existing, you had an existing air conditioner, it's been there fifteen, twenty years?
Yeah, 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 so I got the house like in two years and one summer, I was coming back and wife called me that there's an issue with the air conditioner, I called the HVAC, they said, you know, it's, it's like pretty old, so you have to replace it, I said, okay, come and do it, and that's what they did. And then he calls me one fine day, he's like, hey, you go to, go to the township, I said, for what? He's like, okay, your permit is denied, and I said, what do you mean by permit? So it was like, yeah, you have to apply for permit, and we applied, but it got denied, so I said, what do you want me to do? So it's like, go to the township, and I was talking to Nora, so this is kind of pretty new to me, uh, but yeah, I did replace the existing.
You think it was retrofit, it was like added after the house was built or part of the original construction?
No, part of the original construction, yeah.
So it was, soon have been called at the beginning.
Probably fifteen, twenty years old, but you, yeah.
No, it's kind of. I mean, the house is pretty old, I guess it's sixty or eighty, yeah.
Okay, the de minimis request, any other questions?
No.
No. Any members of the public have any questions? Nothing else you would like to add, right?
Nope.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none. Boy, we got the easy ones tonight, didn't we?
Yeah.
Frame a resolution, somebody, we're not even gonna talk about anymore.
Application twenty-three colon forty-nine, Rupish Patel, thirty-seven English Town Road, block three seventy-three, lot eleven, zone R dash four, issue or grant a C variance to legalize an air conditioning unit contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column eight.
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion, Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Duskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes, results of the variances granted, you'll get a, you'll get a permit in the mail saying that's legit.
Okay.
You don't, you don't get a permit in the mail, you, uh, effort this, the resolution is memorialized, you receive it, then you go back to zoning.
Well, oh, I'll just send you one.
No, thank you.
I'm sorry.
You have to come and pick it up.
Yeah, I guess I.
You gotta go through, you gotta go through the whole dog and pony show, don't worry about it.
Oh, wow, okay, I'll maybe, I'll call you, Laura.
Do we have a, a, a pecking order on these last two here, which one's going first?
Well, we're only doing one, uh, twenty-three twelve.
Twenty-three twelve. Are we gonna carry twenty-three thirteen?
They have to renotice.
They have to renotice, so we can just scratch that, that one off then, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and our board. Joseph, I'm here on behalf of IAAT regarding that, uh, twenty-three thirteen, we've never got proof of applications from the daily record, we were unable to provide that to the board, so we're gonna ask it to be carried, but we are gonna do a renotice.
Okay. Do you have a, do you have a date for that one, Nora?
Yes, uh, what is it, January tenth, I believe it is.
Yeah, that's what you said. Yes, we were watching, we were watching this.
Unofficially, of course.
You may proceed, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Here on the application. One hundred and eighty-fourth, this is gonna be for a LED multi-message billboard.
Is that Route forty-six east or west?
That is west.
If you could raise your right hand, is the testimony about to offer, do you swear that the testimony you're about to offer shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. O'Neill, if you could, why, you're the witness.
You may proceed.
Mr. Rupish, your engineering license is available? Uh, yes, it is, I have a bachelor's license, it's a project area, um, I'm licensed professionally here in New Jersey, but, uh, I guess by, uh, a couple months. So, with that, can you describe for the application, as I believe, it's gonna be referring to plans that was already filed with the board? Uh, that's a, you're gonna identify them by the page numbers? Uh, sure, uh, so, the plans I have up, that's, uh, drawing C dash zero-one to C dash zero-three, and they're all leaving, uh, two-two, twenty-three. So, that is really applying those to me as part of the application.
C O one to C O three?
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, so, the site again, it's, it's, uh, it's all permanent, multi-message, LED, uh, advertising sign, it's one hundred and forty-six. Uh, it's, uh, down on Lot twenty-five, Lot, uh, six, nine, three, uh, and we are, uh, and if you, I have to apologize, because the property's actually in two different zones, and I was corrected, uh, by the board engineer, thank you. Uh, we're in the, uh, the B-two highway, uh, developed district, and we are also in the residential district, R-four. So, uh, basically, the front half of the site that runs along Route forty-six, and then the B-two zone, and then the rear half, uh, the northern half, uh, of the site, uh, that, that runs along, uh, that's Old Woodfield Avenue, is part of the R-four zone.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? Do you have a permit up this yet?
The DOT?
Yeah.
Yes.
I am pretty familiar with their regulations, they don't issue permits in residential zones.
I believe you will have to refer that to a later witness.
I mean, it, it, it's right in the, the issue permit, it's on residential zones.
In, in all fairness, the map, I think, it's on the map that I was looking at, at the...
I, I don't fault you, I, you know...
In the, in the B-two, so it, it's, it's kind of used...
The overall map shows it that way, and if you go down to the detail, you find it isn't.
Okay.
And it's, that, that boundary line hasn't been changed in twenty-five years. So, it's not like some reason. I don't, I don't know really what to do, I mean, if, you know that the permit is... I'm sure if we pointed out to Todd, and you probably represented who's in the commercial zone, the B-two there.
I don't, I don't get that.
You didn't do the permit. Who filed for the permit, do you know? You, you know where I'm going, I mean, I wonder if we just put our wheels, because there's no way to fiddle this sign around and get it out of the residential zone.
I may have just a brief research.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
For, had an opportunity to examine the permit issued by the State of Jersey Department of Transportation. Application number seven-seven-three-five-seven, this site. If the B-two zone, the hole for the billboard is in the B-two zone, and that is what the permit was issued for. So, this, uh, needs to be a condition of some kind.
Can we look at the permit?
This is my only copy. We mark it as, uh, A-one.
We can get a, we can get a photocopy of it, right?
Oh, it doesn't show the map? Yeah, your application had to have a... Map showing where it is. Is McCarthy still down there? This is Gregory. I see it.
Mr. O'Neill, are we marking that A-one? And that's the...
Oh, Jesus.
What was that last part?
That's a map, okay, John. That's the map they're submitting?
There's the, uh, B-two and R-three, that's it.
This is what we had for a map to what you knew.
Does your other witness have any help for us?
Yeah. I, that, it looks like he may have something to say.
I mean, we have a sketch as part of the application.
Yeah, we don't have a...
It has a dimension of fifty feet from a light pole. The... Show the sketch location. And it tells you how you to identify, uh, the root number, show the exact distance in feet measuring along the highway, sign will be from the nearest permanent place of identification, and various other things. And we have a hand-drawn, um, sketch that has forty-six. Forty-six. Then there's a sort of a square with a fifty-foot dimension. I'm not exactly sure what it's fifty feet from, says a light pole.
That's typically how they identify from a, from a, it's usually a DOT.
A permanent fixture.
There's a note, it's digital face, and face, I can't read it, west of the traffic, I guess.
Right, it'll give you the size and the height there.
It's, it's pretty crude, in any case, I want to give these back to you.
Sure.
Uh, would you, we...
At some point, we should get a copy of this.
You're gonna have to copy, right, Joe?
Did you, did you file these with us?
No.
I know. You did not.
Joe, you can, you'll take them back to your office and then, uh, email them to Nora. Thank you. That's a good number.
I know you, you would like to crawl over this D S, Joe, but I don't see how we can go forward without knowing that it's not a residential zone.
I have to, I understand what the board is telling me, but it's Mr. McDonough and I are looking at this. I don't see how you would know it's a residential zone, interact with that, has everything there, B-two? How is this in a residential zone?
No, it's not, it's residential in the back.
I guess the question is, what, what, where is the map that shows us that, because I, I did not find that map.
You have that, huh? Are we saying that the, that the thing is only in the, in the business zone?
We don't know that.
They get it on the back.
I, I can't see, because I don't know where the money is.
Well, here's, here's, here's a map that's been given to Mr. McDonough, from the board engineer, and you got it offline? Jess?
I got it, I, I, what I do is I, um, have a, the website, I go to the participating website, the G I S, and there's a zoning map section there. Take a minute.
Has anybody looked at the county tax records?
Uh, no, I've not.
Okay, because the county tax records for one hundred Route forty-six says it's in a R-three zone.
How do you get into that, Nora?
I Google Morris County tax records, I actually have it on.
You have it?
I have it.
Would you like another recess, Mr. O'Neill? Yeah.